Good evening, welcome to tonight's debate sponsored by the Sun. My name is Tom Zupar, I'm managing editor of the Sun, and I'll be the moderator for tonight. We'll have two debates, first one in a few minutes will start, we'll be for school committee, and at 8:00 PM after a brief break, we will take over for the Board of Selectmen. All of the candidates that have agreed to the ground rules as presented, they are, there will be no opening statement, panels will take questions posed by me, which are both a combination of questions developed by Sun editors and those submitted by readers. Questions are fair and applicable to all candidates. Okay, it's an open format, there will be no time limit, I'm asking the candidates to please keep their answers as succinct as possible on topic, although I want to have a free-flowing discussion of the issues. Finally, each candidate will be allotted two minutes for a closing statement, we'll probably go to about 10 minutes debate, take a brief break, and then we will be off to the Selectmen's debate at 8 o'clock. There are three candidates for school committee this year, two three-year seats on the Board of Selectmen, excuse, on the school committee. They are current chairman Mark Estradie, Jim Gately, finance committee member, and Daniel Lava Goodwin, recreation commission member. Mr. Goodwin unfortunately informed us about 15 or 20 minutes before the start of the debate this evening that he'd fallen ill and would be unable to be here. Knowing, I spoke to Mr. Goodwin yesterday, he was very excited to be here this evening, and so I hope he all gets, well, fairly quickly. So, candidates, welcome, thank you for coming this evening, and we're going to dive right into the questions. First question for you, Mr. Estradie, now that Bill Ricker Memorial High School has been approved, what is the most important issue facing the district, not including building the school?
Not including building the school, I would say, right now, we're a level-two district, I would want to get us up, actually, a level-three district, I would want to get us up to a level-one over the course of a year or two, based on our last few years of test scores, and I'll explain where we, one of our elementary schools is a level-three, based on one special education subgroup, so a school is rated at its lowest point of subgroups, the system is rated at the lowest school level, so we're a level-three. We have two level-ones, the rest are level-twos except for the one elementary school, so I would like to be a level-one school system, say, two to three years from now.
Gately? Well, same thing as Mark said, we're heading in the right direction, and we have two level-one schools, our goal is to get all of them at level-one, it's going to take a little time, but we can do it. I also think we should be getting, I'd like to see technology be more integrated throughout the system. We're in 2016 now, I think we need to start getting, it's going to take, it's going to take some time and some money to do that, but we have to get up to speak with the rest of the towns around us.
You have a plug here, which are the two level-one schools?
It's the, what, Harjar and Parker?
No, the DeTille.
DeTille, sorry.
The DeTille is a commendation school, one of forty-five, sorry, one of forty-five in the state, so obviously that's, they should be commended, we should all be proud of that, and they should be very proud of that.
How do you solve the level-three problem, what's the solution potentially there?
I've asked the superintendent this more than once, I think we're well on the way, the ratings are based on a four-year average, the one particular elementary school has met the goal for the past two years, but we're paying for, if you will, we're paying for the sins of three and four years ago, so I expect that this year or next year, that elementary school will come up, at least to a level-two.
Gately? Okay, let me ask a follow-up, do you, Mr. Gately, you should start with this, you suggested that technology upgrades have to be included. Several years ago, town made a significant investment in technology upgrades in the school system, it's a lot of money, so how in this current environment do you get new technologies at a reasonable price?
Well, that's the trick. I think one of the things we should be doing is trying to get some of our businesses in town more involved, they have a stake in this as well, they want their employees to move to their area, and unless we have a school system that will meet the standards of the 21st century, they're not going to do it. And if we want companies to move to our town to help our tax base, we have to do these things, so sometimes you have to sacrifice a little bit for that.
Mr. Estradie?
Well, this is one of the things we could do, first of all, you don't want to get too hung up on technology, I mean, just because every kid has an iPad, or whatever it may be, doesn't mean that he or she is being taught correctly, right? The most important thing in any school system is the teachers, the kids, the curriculum. Beyond that, bring your own device, most kids from fourth or fifth grade on have their own smartphones, or some, we could look at that, we are looking at that, the high school does a lot of that, the problem with that at a building like the high school and some of our other buildings, it's not always easy to get wireless technology into the classrooms, no matter how much money we spend. So, technology's great, we have a lot of it, we need more of it, but it's not the be-all and all.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen, we'll move on to the next question, we'll start with you and Mr. Estradie. There's been significant research that children are more successful if school starts later in the day. School districts in the Middlesex League sports teams are working consensus that our classes later, is this something Bill Ricker should be looking into, and if it costs more money once again, where do you get that?
Well, first of all, why would you think it would cost more money, because the question I did not ask, did not ask. Second of all, anything that we could do to improve a kid's level of education, we should at least look at, we should study it, see how it works. And I know one of the things, you said Middlesex League, you referenced Middlesex League for sports, right?
Right.
One of the pushbacks is, well, in the middle of winter, or fall even, daylight, so there's no room for practice time and all, so there's a balance, obviously, education more important than sports, but we'd have to look at it.
Gately?
We should always look at things like that, and see what other towns around the country have done, this isn't, there are new, there are peaker dishes all around, and I think we should look at those and see what works and what doesn't work, and as Mark said, you know, we're in a tough spot because it gets dark early around here sometimes, unfortunately. So, that's something we would definitely have to look at as well, but again, whatever works for the kids is what we should be looking at first of all.
Could there be an impact, well, when I mentioned money, specifically busing, because now you have to reroute buses, or you might have to collapse times during the day, so there might be a greater busing cost, so could that be a determining factor?
Well, there's going to be a lot of determining factors, I mean, that would just be one piece of a puzzle.
Okay, we'll move on to the next question then. Tonight up the road in Tewksbury, the school committee is sharing a recommendation on whether to continue use of the Redman nickname for its sports teams. Is it a good idea to consider changing Indians as the Bill Ricker mascot? If you had that first, Mr. Gately.
You know, we want to be sensitive to everybody, and I guess, has there been an outcry against Indians per se, I understand Redman, I guess it's all a matter of perspective. I don't see an outcry in this town for it, so I don't see a push for it, so let's leave it for now, I guess.
Mr. Estradie? You guys thought this was going to be easy, right?
No. Listen, we're not Tewksbury, right, but I will say that Mr. O'Connor, the superintendent in Tewksbury, I think did it right, he held the town-wide meeting, get people's thoughts out there, and I think they were a lot more positive for keeping it than they were negative. I don't know why, I think if it came to that with us, we'd have to ask all populations, parents, students, alumni, you know, I didn't grow up here, but I went to a high school with Warriors, the mascot, and it's Indian headdress, Warriors spelled out in the headdress, they can no longer put that mascot on new uniforms, so it's kind of a compromise, and as a graduate of that school, makes you feel different, so, yeah, we'd have to look at it, but who's to say?
There's been no outcry right now in the community, as far as you can tell?
I have heard nothing.
Okay, we'll move on, next question. Do you generally give, talk about your opinion toward current school district policies, for example, students with special needs, mainstream behavioral problems, students in English as a second language, how do you see the district handling those right now? I'll give you one attempt, especially, how do you see the district handling special needs right now?
I think we're doing a decent job, we've done, over the last three or four years, we've done more in-house, so hopefully the kids are getting the same level of service, I think they are, we're getting it in a more cost-effective manner, because when you send kids out for any special needs service, obviously, it's going to cost more than if you do it in-house. Again, anything can be better in any area, if there are deficiencies, we'd have to look at it, but I don't think there are huge deficiencies.
Mr. Gately?
Well, I think keeping it in-house is hurting for, not only for the cost, but also for the child, they're in their home, you know, this is their hometown, you don't want to send them out again after. So, if we can do that, as long as it's working, if we can do it in-house, and it's working well, which it seems to be, and obviously, nothing is perfect, so we'd have to evaluate, and if there are issues, you need to address them as quickly as possible.
Okay, let's move on to the next street park question I received from a reader, again, assessment of dealing with students' behavioral problems right now, where do you see the district handling that?
I honestly don't know enough about that right now.
Mr. Estradie?
My guess is that this is probably rooted in a particular case or two, which I-
It's a pretty general question, so, yeah, it could be.
But I'm theorizing, but we have school psychologists, we have special education teachers, we have people that are trained in this, but what people have to realize from both sides, but as the parent of a non-special needs or behavioral, like challenged student, or parent of a behaviorally challenged student, every kid has a right to an education, and we have to give that kid an education, and that's what we're doing, so.
Okay, we'll move on to the last one, which is, English as a second language, you see, English language learners, I believe, is the terminology now, what's the district doing to address the ELL, or what should they be doing?
Again, I don't have a lot of expertise in the area, I just don't, but I can't say that we've heard many complaints at the school committee level, and I generally think, I have a ear to the ground, and I find out about most things, so I think we're okay.
Mr. Gately?
I'm with Mark on that, I don't know enough about that.
All right, we'll take the next question then. Okay, I'll, okay, we'll go with this one, this will be a little thought-provoking. Selectmen are paid, school committee members are not, should school committee members be compensated?
Who's answering?
Let Mr. Gately first. Well, ask the finance committee member first.
Well, I'm alone, there's a lot of work that's done, I've watched numerous committees, school committee meetings, and there's just as much work that goes into a school, as someone on the school committee has on Board of Selectmen. To be honest, I don't think anyone either should be paid, I think we do this because it's our way of giving back to the town, so I don't, I get the snip in part of it, and it's been part of the history of Bill Ricker, but frankly, I think both committees should do this for the love of it, because they want to give back to their town.
Mr. Estradie?
Bluntly, I couldn't care less, I, like Jim said, I'm not doing this for money, and if I was, I'd be doing it for about 10 cents an hour, right, and same with the Selectmen, I'm not doing this for money, I have, I make a decent salary at my day job, I have health benefits and all that, so it doesn't interest me, how's that?
Okay, very good, you're very succinct in your answers so far, which is running me out of questions. If you guys can ask me some questions while you're on. Let's go into more philosophical stuff of running the district, are you comfortable with the level of benefits that are given to district employees right now, specifically any benefits that might be a little bit more generous than in the private sector such as sick leave buyback? Mr. Estradie, we'll start with you first, let me ask, sorry, are you on the negotiating committee?
I, which one?
The school committee, negotiate, do you negotiate, who negotiates with the teachers?
There's one rep from the school committee for each of the unions, there's the ad union, the administrators, the teachers.
Do you negotiate with any of those units, personally?
First of all, we're not supposed to negotiate, we watch.
Okay, we watch.
We're observers, and then we discuss in executive session.
Okay, so, just in general, are you comfortable with the level of benefits that are accrued to-
We have done, we have done away with sick leave buyback for newer employees, I think that's been the last several years now, obviously, there are some existing employees that have that. Am I comfortable with it? I don't have it at my company, but I will say this, I don't have to sit in front of a class full of five, 10, 15-year-old kids either, and try to educate them, right? I make a lot more than teachers do, would I want to be a teacher? I don't know, I don't think I could do it, it takes a special breed, so if it takes a little bit extra every now and then, so be it.
Mr. Gately?
Well, these contracts are negotiated, so we have our negotiating team for the school district and the unions. When it was presented before the finance committee in the fall, Mr. Volwerd seemed pretty pleased with it, he thought it was a fair, fair contract for both sides, and that's what you want, we want to encourage, we want to have a good place for people to come to, we want people to want to come to Bill Ricker, so, you know, we don't want the most generous, we also don't want it to be on the cheap end either, so, so it has to be fair to both sides, and from what I could tell in the fall, it seemed to be considered fair, so.
Can I just add something?
Sure.
I'll just add too, that on a per capita basis, we don't quite pay our teachers as well as some of the towns around us, we lose teachers, you want to keep good teachers, so you have to do, and salary-wise, we're pretty limited with what we can do, as far as the unions go, so we have to do whatever we can do to try to keep the better teachers.
Is attracting teachers to the district an issue?
I don't think so, because, I know, for example, a couple of years ago, there was a third-grade job that opened at Parker in July, there were 500 applicants, so, was it because it was Bill Ricker? Probably not, it was because it was a job. Do we want to make it as attractive as possible? Absolutely, will we? Yes.
Mr. Gately, you want to add anything to that? Okay, we'll move on. Still want to Common Core. I know it is a bit settled, are you comfortable with Common Core as it stands right now, I mean, there's a lot of pushback along the country to go to something else, and we'll get to Park, and then MCAST in a minute, but, Mr. Estradie, comfortable with Common Core as it stands now?
Yes, some people think it's a bad thing, it's, you know, it's this big evil thing, what it is, it's a level of standards, it's nothing less than Massachusetts standards have ever been, when we adopted Common Core in either 2010, 2011, we adopted it with 40-some-odd other states, but it was at the current Massachusetts level or higher, it was made sure it was that way, I don't think our kids are suffering from it, and a lot of times, Common Core, people get frustrated with math, I've been up at midnight trying to do third-grade math, right, and I consider myself to be a pretty smart guy, and doing third-grade math at midnight is not fun, but you know what, it's not the way my kids, it's not the way I learned, just like I didn't learn math the way my parents did, we have to evolve, people complain that the United States is getting beaten by countries like Taiwan and China, in math and sciences, we have to evolve, and that's part of it.
Mr. Gately?
Well, unfortunately, I think, I'd like to just lose the name, Common Core, because I think there's a lot of misconceptions about it, and I think a lot of people are unclear exactly what it is, and like Mark said, it's a set of standards, to bring us to the 21st century, for what people need to be educated at, the level they need to be educated at in the 21st century. If we just deal with that and not call it something, Common Core, I think people would be more comfortable with it.
Want to suggest the name, or?
21st century, New Math, how's that?
What do you think the biggest misperception is about Common Core, sorry, Mr. Gately, what do you think people don't understand about it?
Well, I think one of the big things is people think it's a federal takeover of education, when in fact, it's, we, there's a set of standards, they're saying, okay, when our kids are done, they have to know this, you decide how they get to know that, so we come up with how we're going to teach that, now, we come up with the curriculum, and that's all on the local level, and I don't think people understand that part, that's one of the big ones, because I think people fear the federal government with education, so.
Mr. Estradie, I'll let you answer remembering your soliloquy at town meeting on this.
I hooked up my car while we were there, the, the lack of local control is the first thing, right? What I didn't say at town meeting is nobody from Malden, nobody from Washington DC has called me or the superintendent saying, you have to do this, this, and this, there are standards, we have control over the curriculum, we have control over what gets taught in order to meet the standard, and that's what we do.
How should we test for that, then? I mean, there's been a lot of debate now whether we should put a park, or at the MCAST, now it's talked about, an MCAST 2.0?
And you know what MCAST 2.0 is going to be?
Which is?
A beefed-up MCAST, which is going to have a lot of park in it, and called MCAST 2.0.
So, is that, you think it's going to lull any fears down the road, or is this just, are we calling it New New MCAST?
There are educational standards in this country, in this state, there will always be educational standards in this country and in this state, we have to test to see if our kids meet that standard, whether it's Park, whether it's MCAST, there will be a test. But one thing that I will say is, we bought this testing package, I-ready, from Curriculum Associates in town, and I know this because I've gotten results from my daughter, she took a, I think it was reading comprehension, one day at, say, 1:00 in the afternoon, we had her results by 7:00 that night, and not only did we have the results, we knew what she had to work on, so, testing helps, nobody likes it, but testing helps.
Well, it's a tool, and testing is a tool, and that's the way, we should use it as a tool, just to find out what our kids are learning, more importantly, what they're not learning, and what we need to improve on, and then getting hung up again on tests, a lot of people are against Park because they believe that's Common Core, well, it's a test, and the Park now is probably isn't going to be the same Park in five years, or 10 years, same as MCAST isn't the same test that it was 15 years ago, it constantly evolves, and that's the way it should be, everything should be evolving, because we want to find out what works and what doesn't work, that should be the goal.
Are kids only tested?
I guess it bears, from what I've read, yes, they are in some cases, and from what I've read, no, in some cases, it all depends what tests are being used for, if we're talking the standardized testing?
Me. Mr. Estradie?
I don't believe so, whether it's a standardized test, or it's a quiz, or pop quiz, or an exam in class, again, you're measuring, you're measuring two-way standard, whether it's the state or the teacher's standard, that's what a test is, are they overtested? I don't think so.
Should graduation be timed to a test?
It is now, under MCAST, nobody really has complained about it, so.
It definitely should be, it definitely should be timed.
Okay, let's move on here. All right, we have another reader question here, if elected, what will you do if your climate change is a subject that reaches every child by the time they leave school? We'll start with you, Mr. Gately. I'll add the qualifier, this is an important issue, and students must be aware of the dangers, risks, and opportunities.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, they should be taught in their science classes, just teach them as we see what's happening outdoors, you see what's happening in the news, so, yeah, they should be taught that from a very young age, just it's their environment, they need to know what's going on in their environment.
Mr. Estradie?
I think, yeah, you teach it as part of the science curriculum, but if you teach it from all angles, doesn't, is it really happening, is it not happening, and I say this, I work at a company that works on it, not me in particular, but from all sides, you have to look at it, that's what education should be.
Okay, well, next question is, I understand, school committee is meeting on Monday night to start the process of out-vying school, which is-
Surprise, surprise.
Surprise, surprise, which is slated for closing 2019?
Correct.
When the high school's online 2018?
No, 19.
19, excuse me, so, my question is, in a general sense, now that you're starting this process, what do you think should be done with that site?
You mean when it does close?
When it does close.
Well, if, when the school department deems that it's expendable, which I fully expect that we will in 2019, then it's up to the town, I would assume, we turn it over to the Selectmen, the Selectmen come up with a committee, and hopefully, it's acted upon quickly, unlike what happened with the old DITSA, I should say.
I think that should be the plan, you know, right now, they're actually, they have a committee going with the DITSA, the old DITSA, but I think we learned a lot from that, too, that we just can't let it sit, that's something we need to act on quickly, whether the town's going to use it for something, or they're going to sell it, but act on it quickly, and get the input from as many people as we can, residents, businesses, just find out what's going on, so we can have a good use to that property.
That's good.
Sure.
Just to clarify, it's going to close in 2019, in all likelihood, that's the way we advertised it with the high school, it was part of the whole sale of the high school, of the high school project, but, and I know you've probably seen something, well, why not close it now? I'll tell you why not close it now, because there are 200 kids there, that we promised them and their families that that school would not close until 2019, when the high school opens, and if people don't think it's a big deal, it was just before I got on the on the school committee, when people got redistricted into the Parker from the binding, one little neighborhood, one little section of a neighborhood, and then kids from the DeTille got redistricted, and districted into the Parker, it is a big deal, to the kids and the families, we promised 2019, it's going to be 2019.
Just, in a general sense, is there any educational use for that building after 2019? I know that's what the committee may come up with, but-
That's what the committee's for, in my opinion?
That's what it's going to come up with.
I don't think so, but that's one man's opinion.
Well, that's why you need to input, from as many people as you can, I mean, one person might have an idea, that, I mean, that no one thought of, and that's why we need to get a committee going, to find out what we can use it for, whether it's educational or else.
Okay, well, let's go with a more general question now, assuming you're both elected come April 2nd, what would you like to be able to say about the school district three years from now, and again, not high school? Mr. Gately?
That way, the destination for education-
We talked about that answer too, we'll give you another try.
Okay. One, we'd like to, we don't want to be a level-three school system, if we can, if we can raise that up to two, and with the goal of one, that's what we should be headed for, and that's, that should be what we strive for, that excellence in our school system, that people want to come to Bill Ricker. The first thing people ask when they, when they go looking for a home, is, how's the school system? And if you say it's a level-three, and then you say, well, a level-three is bad, and that's just one small part of our school system, it does us all a disservice.
Mr. Estradie?
All right, this whole destination for education thing bothers me, and if you watch meetings, you'll see me groan every time, and I get what he's trying to do, he says, you see it as a stepping stone, what I want our school system to be, whether it's three years, one year, 10 years from now, one of the best school systems in the state, there's no reason that we shouldn't have one of the best school systems in the state, but along the same lines, you want to do it so it's a bank, a good bank for your buck, we were talking before, Westford is a good bank for your buck, Acton, Boxwell is probably the best bank for your buck, that's what we want to strive for, and Tom Murphy said this at graduation last year, the high school principal, we want to be, our kids to say, not, in spite of the fact that we're from Bill Ricker, which I think a lot of people outside Bill Ricker think, which is nowhere near the case, we want it to be because we're from Bill Ricker, that's the way it should be.
Why do you think there's a perception issue?
I don't know, but you know what, when I didn't live here, I had the same perception, now I live here, I've lived here for 15 years, I'm not going anywhere, I don't know, it's much nicer town than what the reputation was 20 or 30 years ago.
What changed your mind?
What changed my mind, getting engulfed, and my wife would kill me for saying this, but I said, you know what, we'll live there for five years because it's cheaper, when the kids are in kindergarten, we'll start looking around. The kids got into kindergarten in first grade, there was no reason to look around, we liked the people, we liked the school system, we liked the teachers, we liked everything about the town.
Mr. Gately, well, do you think there's a perception issue with the schools?
Yes, but I think that's just something that's evolved over time, and that's one of our biggest battles, we have to fight that, and I think we're doing a better, much better job at it. I mean, just look at the kids that are coming out here, they're going to some of the best schools in the country, they're going to work for some of the best, the best companies, we have an excellent school system here, and that's why, I mean, I grew up here, I went to the school system here, when my wife and I were looking for a house, we didn't look anywhere else, we were comfortable with the school systems here, we knew we could send our kids here, because we knew they were going to get a good education, if they put in the time and the effort, they were going to get a great education, and that's why we felt comfortable doing that, and I think we just need to get that word out, and I think we're starting to do that, and that's what I want to try, I don't know how we'll do it, but, whether it's good, better marketing, but we can do it.
I actually heard the word marketing at the last school committee meeting, which I do watch you guys on TV.
God bless you.
But, what specifically do you have to do to market the schools, and I know there's been a lot of discussion on the Selectmen's side about marketing the town as a place to come, so, what are some of the things you think the district should be doing in the next couple of years, you know, understanding, again, you've got the new high school coming on board, what types of things?
Well, a new high school is going to be, go very far with marketing the town, if you, if you- tech. If you take someone to the high school as it is right now, it doesn't matter what you tell them, they're gonna see that, and they're just gonna, you kidding me? But when they see a new school, that's gonna be worthy of the kids that are gonna be going to it, it's gonna be a destination. I think that would be a good selling point for. I think we're doing a better job. Mr. Boba sends out newsletters, Tom Murphy sends out newsletters. I think people are getting more involved, I think they're actually hearing about all the good things that are going on in the school. I think it has to start here, has to start with the people in town. When they feel better about their school system, when they feel better about their town, they're gonna tell their friends who don't live here, instead of hearing all the bad things about the town. They're gonna start to hear the good things.
Mr. Stradio, some marketing ideas.
Well, one thing we did do that was kind of overcome by the events of the high school is we did start a marketing committee with parents, teachers, administrators, school committee members, for the last several months, that's been kind of pushed to the wayside by the high school. We have to do things like improve the websites, all that kind of thing. If you're on Twitter all the time, and I know you are, there's BMHS Media, there's BMHS Indians, ironically, which is the administration, BMHS Athletics, or you go into John Hancock Hall, or the, for the DECA finals in Boston. People, they say this all the time, people get sick of hearing Bill Ricker called out, because the kids are not DECA program and the advisors are so good, and you would think it's not a surprise anymore, when so many Bill Ricker kids make it to the Nationals. We need to advertise that kind of thing, and we need to keep, we lose between 25 and 30% of our kids between eighth grade and ninth grade. We need to slow that tide a little bit.
Do you see yourself in competition with either private schools or Shashin at this point?
As a school system? You have to. And I'll repeat with the superintendent, he's much nicer about it than I am, right? We can't force kids and parents to make a choice one way or the other, if they wanna go to one of the private schools or tech, smaller class sizes, whatever it is. But what we don't want them to do is be running away from our school system. If they're going to a school system, so be it, that's their choice. We don't want them to be running away from our schools. I don't think there's any reason they should be, but that's what we wanna avoid.
Hey, Mr. Gable?
Just from personal experience, I do know some people, I don't wanna say ran away, but, you know, they opted for other schools. And it wasn't because of the education they were getting, it was because of the state of some of the buildings that were here. The ceilings have literally fallen down in the high school. Some parents don't wanna send their kids there, and I understand that, and I think a lot of that will change once we open the new high school. I think you will see some of those people coming back. They won't opt for those other options, and they'll stay here.
Okay, well, ask one more question, maybe we'll go to final closing statements then. What can the district do to generate more revenue? Is there a revenue stream anywhere that the district could work out to bring in more money? And would it go directly to the schools? For example, I floated the idea of a meals tax at another forum. What's your meals tax revenue strategy for the school district? Half a million dollars a year? Just floating an idea out here.
Well, I can't think of anything offhand, I can understand the meals tax, and it seems to be getting a positive hearing with the selectmen, but that's for something completely different. I don't know what else we would, what other kind of tax we could do, and I don't foresee anything like that occurring any time soon.
Hey, Mr. Stradio?
I don't think we're in the business of making money, we're in the business of educating kids, right? Bring up bus fees, or raising athletic fees, then you'll see that people really do care. I'll leave that to the selectmen.
Okay, very good. As going through all my questions, I think we'll just kind of go to closing statements, and we will have two minutes each. Mr. Stradio, you can go first, please look into the camera and tell people why they should vote for you on April 2.
Why they should vote for me. Hi, I'm Mark Estradio, I'm the current chairman of the Bill Ricker School Committee, running for reelection on April 2. I have been the chairman for this year, I've been on the school committee for three years, serving one year as vice chair also. I've been in town for 15 years with my wife Kathleen, my two daughters, who are both students at the Marshall, and they will graduate from BMHS. I care about this town, I care about the school system. I'm sure you'll hear Jim saying, or Boba say, we're doing it for the kids. That's why I'm doing this. I'm doing it for my kids, I'm doing it for the 5,200 other kids in this school district. I think over the last three years on the school committee, I've proven that I will be there for the kids. I have not missed a meeting, I only missed one building committee meeting because they jobbed it on me, so I wouldn't miss it. And when I say I'm gonna be somewhere, I will be there, and I will work to make this a better school system, and by the time we're done, this will be one of the best school systems in the state. So again, Mark Estradio, I'm second on the ballot, please vote for me. Thanks.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Stradio. Mr. Gable, two minutes, please?
I'd like to thank our moderator, Tom Zupa, the Lowell Sun, the Bill Ricker Council Beijing, Mark, and the audience watching tonight. We're at an exciting point in time in our town's school system. The town has overwhelmingly approved a new state-of-the-art high school. We have two elementary schools that have attained the highest levels in the state, hopefully the rest will soon follow. We have new programs such as all-day kindergarten or early morning care programs. We're adjusting our school's curriculum to help our students better be prepared for the 21st century. I mean, I could go on and on about the improvements that have gone on over the past few years.
You won't.
Mark is a huge part of that. You know, we're moving forward, and my goal is to ensure that our schools and our kids have the tools in place for them to continue to improve and be innovative. We can't afford to go backwards, and I'll do what I can to make sure we never do. As a community, the most important thing we can do is to make sure we provide for our students the opportunity to get the best education we can afford to give them. As I've said before, I don't see these kids as simply mine or yours or theirs. These are our kids, and they're our future. I can't think of a more worthy or important investment than our kids. If I'm fortunate enough to be elected to the school committee, our kids will always be my number-one priority. As someone who's lived in this town most of his life, who decided with his wife to buy a house here, raised our four kids here, I'm proud to call Bill Ricker home. I consider being elected to the Bill Ricker School Committee an honor and privilege, doing my part to ensure our children have the opportunity to be the best that they can be. Be one of the best ways I can think of giving back to my town. To do this, I'll need your help, so I ask for your consideration for this position. Again, my name is Jim Gable, and I ask for your vote for Bill Ricker School Committee on April 2. Thanks.
Okay, let's again, thank you for being here this evening, thank you for the audience for being here. Once again, there are three candidates for two, three-year seats on the school committee, Mark Estradio, Jim Gable, you're here this evening. Once again, we hope, Daniel Bubba Goodman is feeling better, he called in again at the last minute, wasn't able to be here. Town election is April 2, I'm told you can vote absentee until noon on April 1, so if you're not in town that weekend, please cast a ballot. We're gonna take a break, we'll be back at 8:00 PM for the board selecting to vote. Thank you very much.